Kusinjo na, ethiopiana, vannu oru ethiopian.
Kushi means he is an Ethiopian.
Aha, karupun artho.
It means he is dark.
Aha, oru ethiopian.
He is an Ethiopian.
Aha, neendu olakathila karupaavu, alag illiyoo, theramilliyoo, kr, enna illiyoo, illa illa ngarala irukkado. Aha, othatham muddikumodhi appidi muddichire? Narchi idiyoodu muddi.
You might be dark in this world without any beauty or any talents but when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings.
Vakkalakirukkade.
You might not be beautiful.
Moody style arukkade.
The hair will not be beautiful.
Othadala karkade.
The lips will not be beautiful.
Veelathol kadayad.
There is no white skin.
Aha, idellam pracheneelad.
But this is not a matter.
Indu olakathila nee enna alangolamarunadaale shari, othatham muddikumodhi viswasa pathile, narchi idiyoodu nee muddikana.
However, this oddly you might be found in the world when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings.
Esivatallayam muddiya churiti churiti vudittu, eelukiravu make-up allam vodittu, nee thothu poradu veda, indu olakathila krishuvukaalavu ti vuddi. Nee karupaerundhalavu, manavatiaerundhalavu pothumanaathu.
Curling your hair and fashioning yourself with all the designs of the world and feeling in this world, life there is no use if you finish the race with good tidings, it is sufficient.
Naan karpaeridukkaan, naan karpaeridukranenndu enne seyadiringal, paradiringal.
Do not look at me because I am dark.
Aha, colorless, idellam pracheneekadayad.
Color dress and this is not a matter.
Colorless, colorless.
Colorless is not a matter.
Aha, adu oru pracheneelad.
This is not a matter at all.
Namdri poddukame, alagum illai, sounderiyum illai.
Our policy is, there is no form of godliness.
Kathrudeyaparishutthanamathukumai muddavudaka.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Mudulam Samuel, padineela madhikaram, padineel padinettu vasanangal vasukkala.
First Samuel chapter seventeen verses seventeen and eighteen.
Kathrudeyaparishutthanamathukumai muddavudaka.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Isai thandu dey kumarakithaavi denokki, silakariyengal chollukkadaaga, namipodukke vasikke kettam.
We read of certain things which Jesse the father says unto his son David.
Isai nu dey pilligalil, oru silar raanuvathile pani purindharka.
The sons of David, some of them were in the military.
Oru silar veettila eyarundharka.
Some of them were at home.
Oru silar aadugalai meethukondruntharka.
Some of them were grazing the sheep.
Andathagapan, overuvarukum, overuvaruwele, avralai amarti vaitturundhan.
That father placed each of them in different positions.
Israelele, oru yuttam naddakkukkuyae, oru suunnalai undaiyundhadu.
There was a time in Israel when there was a war.
Saul raja vagerundhan.
Saul was the king.
Phylisthergal, avanu merkkullai, vaki deditikondruntharka.
And Philistines were seeking that they might war with him.
Suunnalai, iranduverukkum adukulamana poradu, iranduverum yuttam seyya ayathamanakka, phylisthergalum Israelele.
When situations came to be compromising to each other, Philistines and the children of Israel began to war.
Aha, savulodu rindudana janangal kulle, oru byamum thikulum marindarundhadu.
But the people who were standing along with Saul, there was fear and trembling.
Yuttan erathle, oru raachasapparavi vandhu, silakariyengalai pesa aramithaan.
A giant came before them at the time of war and began to speak.
Namkellarka, adu terindhadaana oru kariyam.
This is what all of us know.
Avan chonnai, oru chinnakariyavanan chonnai, yen ratthamsindhavendam, oru oburu orutthurukko orutthar, muddikolallam.
Why should we shed blood? Let us go with one against the other, he said.
Neegi tamilla chollavanga, elladu tamnadailla chollavanga, edukubodisandabodno, ottekyothikum muddikolannu chollavanga.
In Tamil Nadu, they will say, why should we fight like this? Let us go one against the other.
Idhey kariyate, avanun cholla aramithaan.
He also said like this.
Ongelorale kottikonduvarangal, naan nikkaran, yenney avgal jayuthu vattal, naangal allarum adibai, naan avni jayuthal, ningal allarum adibai.
And choose one man from among you, let him fight with me, and if he is able to overcome me, then we will all be yours, but if we prevail, then you will all be ours.
Ippidi naangu naathkaila, avan indha savaludavan, indha janangal ketta odane, bayindu odi payudavu.
Like this, every day he used to come and ask, come unto the people, and the people get afraid and they will go away.
Abishayambathasaul, thandu dey vaalkile silatholbigal vandhabidinale, indha sathruva eluthinikka thrani illamal, avan aranmanile, kattukondrunthan.
Since this anointed Saul, who was having no capability to stand against this giant, he was staying in his palace.
Indha yuttuthukum unbaagave, avanukulai asutthavi, porada aramithivutthadu.
Even before this war, the evil spirit began to trouble him.
Onna Samuel, padinara padinallai, namidhe padikamudiyam.
In First Samuel sixteen sixteen, we can read about this.
Aha, anghey, avanukulai, andha avi nu dey thakkadal, padinara padinallakla, namidhe parkamudiyam.
In sixteen fourteen, we can see this.
Anavidinale, avan yuttakalathukku varamale, oringipoyvuttham.
Before he did not come to the war field, he went away.
Avan anghey rindu gundu, yaravu pojayithal, naan ninu dey magali, vivahum seyyitu kodukkaranenndu, avan pesikkondairundhan.
Staying there, he said that if anyone will go and overcome him, then I will get my daughter married to him.
Naathkail boykondairindhabidinal, Isai, thandu dey kumarale kurithudana, oru kavale eyarpattu, avargalippu idukkaraargalindu parkumbidiyaga, thandu dey yeleyakumarane, avan anupparambikran.
As this went by, Jesse was careful about his sons and was worried about them and sent his youngest son unto them.
Isai, than kumarakithaavi denokki, naan unney undey sagovrathukka anupukiren, nee un sagovrathil othamaai poi, ivagale kuduthu, avrali idukkaraargalindu parthu, adayalathai vangi konduva, endu chonnan.
And Jesse said, and today, what is, son, take now therefore for thy brethren all these, and run to the camp, and take as a pledge of them and come back.
Inde bible shadi vandhu, nee othamaai po, adayalathai vangiwa.
Today's Bible study is, run to the camp and take the pledge.
Idhathan namdri, indiye vedha parathanudhey thalayippe.
This is the topic of our Bible study today.
Nee othamaai pogavendam, aha, thirimbi varumbodu, adayalathodu varavendu.
You should run to the camp and take the pledge on the return.
Padineel avasanathila kadaisile, nee othamaai po, endu chollukran, padinettavasanakadaisile, adayalathai vangi konduva, endu chollukran.
In verse seventeen, the last portion, he is asking to run to the camp, and verse eighteen, the last portion, he says, take the pledge.
Indu viswasa vaalkai, oru othappayanam, othapandayam.
This life of faith is a race.
Aha, indu othapandhitle, pallar odukraragal, pallar odi vittaragal, pallar odi kondurukrom, innu oru periyal thiral kottam, oda aramikum.
In this race, many of them have run the race, many of them have finished the race, many of us are still running to it.
Anegar odi idukkaraargal, avargal idukkinaranendu, avaralkum devanakkum teriyum.
Many of them have run the race, there be they have run only they and God knows.
Aha, indhu otham muddiyam poradu, nee adayalathai vangi kondu, anghey poynikavendam.
But at the end of the race, we should get a sign and go stand.
Adavu, ivan kondubonadana, andha paalkatti galvarutha payirilla, avunkakarachida, avga soomaarkanglan, patthittu, aam pettukondai, enghera kayiluthu vangi kondu, nesinuvame, avga solanu, naanga pettukondomne, adavangi kuddai, ivaveedu poi, tagapandakudutha, tagapunakku oru nimmadhi, namu poi pakkaadhalo, payyam poi pathirkam, pollingallan allaarikanga.
If he go and hand over the parched corn and the ten cheeses to the brethren, and take a sign from them, and bring back to his father, then the father will be having a relaxation, that his dear children sons are fine.
Nammyinkuda, thar, namdriyadevan, oru nokkathodinda bhoomile, anupirukkara.
Even God the father has sent us with a purpose to the earth.
Indhu othathai, namipidi odukram.
How are we running this race?
Poruvali iduvari, appidi odi idukkrom, enbadu niraanithu parthal, namdri othathilulla kurivadukalai, nam sari seyyukkulla iyalam.
Maybe if we examine ourselves as to how far we have run this race thus far, then we can rectify our lives.
Appidi kurivadukal, namkutthendada vittal, mattavul odukravu othathilulla, andha neravi parkumbodu, namdri kurave, nam kandukkala muddiyam.
If you are not able to find a shortcoming in our race, then if we see the race that others are running, we can see the shortcomings in us.
Nan thirumun chollukkaren.
Again repeat.
Mattavurukkudey neravi parkumbodu, namdri kuravi terimethavu, mattavurukkudey kuravi parkumbodu, nam neravurukulupola, yamathupattupoyvutavu.
When we see the fullness of the others, then we will find the people who are shortcoming, but if we find the people who are shortcoming, then we will find us with fullness.
Oru van sathrua eyarundhalakuda, avanathululla nalla karikale, kallakariyengalai, nam kattukkula vendidha avasyam.
Even if one be our enemy, it is needful for us to learn good things out of him.
Avundhey theramigale, nam kattukkula vendidha avasyam.
We should learn his talents.
Aha, avundhey theramigale, nam kattukkula poradu, namukke, adu samayathuku oruvi seyyam.
When we learn of his talents in times to come, it will help us.
Aha, ingenam parkumbodu, idu oru otham.
When we consider here, this is a race.
Indha kariyathu chollu, naan othamaai po.
And he is telling, run to the camp.
Chikramahuppo.
Go fast.
Aha, nee thirimbi varano, aha, adayalathodu thirimbi varano.
You should come back, but you should take a pledge from them.
Nee enudhey pillaidhan.
You are my son.
Aha, nee abishayambathavundhan.
You are anointed.
Singaththay merkkondavundhan.
You have overcome the lion.
Aha, karadhyay merkkondavundhan.
You have overcome the bear.
Alakasuramadala vasigake kudiyavundhan.
And you are able to play on the harp.
Aadugalai porupai kattukkuluvaravundhan.
You are able to keep the sheep properly.
Tagapunadevaathike kilkpidikavundhan.
And you are obeying to the father's voice.
Ippidi palavidamana qualification, ongelkum, namakkum, avanakkum, irukkalam irundharu.
Like this, he and we could have such qualifications.
Aha, tagapunippo chollurudhunana, nee po, othama po, aha, adayalathavangi tuva.
But now the father is asking him to run and take the pledge.
Idhu ra, tagapunnu dey vanchai.
This is the desire of the father.
Nee porudu mukkiamala, adayalathodu thirimbi varano.
Your running to the camp is not important, but you should take the pledge.
Anegar odukraragal, aha, oru vandhan, parisai pettukkuluvaran.
Many of them are running the race, but only one takes the prize.
Aha, indhu othamdan, avanukke vaalki nu dey tanning points.
It is this race that became a turning point in his life.
Aha, palladangalika, avandhey vaalkile poirukran, andha vaidukullaga.
He has gone to many places within that age.
Andha kurikappadvaayidukulla, palladangalika, avan poirukran.
Within that age, he has gone to different places.
Aha, indhu edathukku poonam pattingala, ingedaavandhey vaalkai, thiruppumunayaga mariyavuttha.
But his running to this place became a turning point of his life.
Anghey rindhu daavandhey vaalkai payanam, mothilamaga, aliparaga, aadumekkarantha tolil, avunkilladu, aduthandha abishayathunnu dey kattupakleye, sailbada aramithaan.
It is from this race that his total life has changed, and from then he did not go to grace the sheep, he let his life not turn, not amounting.
Aduvarika, avunku vedu, aadumekkara, indhu rendhada, avunkirundhadu.
Until then, his house and grazing of sheep was there in him.
Aha, avunku varey engemi teriyadu, appidi engayadu poona, odane vandruva.
He does not know anything else, if he goes likewise, he will come back.
Aha, ippooradu, avandhey vaalki, ivay, kattathirupuyudukran.
But now the Lord is turning his life.
Aha, tagapun mulamahuppo, thirupukran.
He is turning it through the father.
Aha, enna pathile poonalo, devan namenadathukkaraanu, madhalaadu, ningal viswashikkenu.
Because, and therefore, at any path we go through, we should believe that firstly God is leading us.
Aha, appidi avan viswasiithu, tagapunnu dey vaathke kilkpidinda, appidiye purappattuponam.
When he thus believed, he believed in the father and obeying to his words, and went like that.
Aha, adu avanu vaalki ivay, puratti pottuvattha.
And that turned over his life.
Aadumeythavunai singasannathuke, uriyavanaga, adu machivattha.
He was grazing sheep, he made him birthday of the throne.
Aha, adiyamum, muppatiala madhikaram, nam parkumbodu.
When we read Genesis chapter thirty six.
Josephin vaalkaiyum, tagapun anuppinasunnelildan, vaalkai, thiruppumunayaga mariinadu.
Even in the life of Joseph, the situation that his father is sending him is a turning point in his life.
Aha, adiyamum, muppatiala padimunla parkumbodu, tagapunavunai kubittu, naan unney avralathukka sagovrathila anupapogiren va, endran.
In Genesis chapter thirty seven verse thirteen, we see that the father is calling him and saying, that I will send thee unto the brethren, come.
Odane avan chonnai, naan pogiren.
And immediately, he said, I will go.
Ingheyum, tagapun, avanku, adhiga paasamrindhalo, devasithathenra, pogidi varumbodu, paasathu orikke vittu, avanay anupivudukran.
Here too, the father is a lot of love for him, but when it comes to the will of God, he puts aside this love and sends into the will.
Adiyamum, muppatiala madhikaram, muna vasanathila, avan kumaradhi, ellariyilum, avanay adhigamai neshithaan.
In Genesis chapter thirty seven verse three, we see above all his children, he loved him more.
Kattar namme neshikkaradu unmai.
It is true that the Lord is loving us.
Aha, adheen erathle, nammoolamai, tumdriyasithathen neravetthavendum, enbadu vanchikkaradu unmai.
But at the same time, through verse, he wants to do the will of milk through us.
Avurdayanbu, avurdayasitham, endu parkumbodu, devan, thandu dey sithathukka thadh adhigamaha edangodukkara.
When we see his love and the will of God, God gives more importance to his will.
Aha, tumdriyasitham, endu varumbodu, anbu orikke vittu, tumdriyasithathesigara karigala, thandhiviramaga, devan irangukkara.
When it comes to his will, he puts aside this love and is more concerned about the will.
Pida, thandu dey kumarane, pirindhu irundhadu, kadayadu.
The father has never departed from his son.
Aha, devasitham, endu vandhobodu, avari siluvayile, arayemudiyaga, andha paaduklin paadiki, appidiyupu, upuyuthuvudukran.
But when it comes to the will of God, the father, he didn't self to be crucified and go in the path of suffering.
Anbu veda, tumdriyasithathukku, sithathesailbudduthavendum, enbadu le, devan migavum gavannamai irukkara.
More than his will, the Lord is much concerned about fulfilling the will of God.
Inghey nam parkumbodu, naan unney avralathanupukirenendu, Josephin tagapun anuppinavendu, avan poonan, avan vaalkai payanam, perupadiki thirupappattuvuttha.
Here, when the father of Joseph sent him, saying that I will send you to my dear brethren, his lifestyle also changed.
Angheyum, avunku chollappadvaathay, enadri ma?
They do the words spoken to him.
Nee poi, undey sagodharudey sheemam, idukkidenruppar.
You go and see the well-being of your brethren.
Aadugal idukkirinduppar.
See how the flocks are.
Enakkum, marusaidhi konduva.
And bring me back again.
Aha, adiyamum, muppatiala padinallu makkthosu.
Genesis thirty seven verse fourteen.
Appalu devan, nee poi, un sagodharudey sheemam, idukkidenju, aadugal idukkiridhu, endu parthu, enakkum, marusaidhi konduva, endhu avanukse salli. Pattingala, nee aadugal idukkirmu, patthittu, onga sagodharule, idukkaran, patthittu, nee enseeno? Neenakondorunana, enake, marusaidhi, enakkukonduva?
You see how your brethren are and how the flocks are and bring me back again.
Aha, idhathan devanudhey thittam.
This is the plan of God.
Tagapunnu dey thittamla, idhathan, nee po, paru, idukkangalam, patthittu, sugasaidhiyala visarichitti, enakkum, marusaidhi konduva?
The father's plan is this, that go and ask the welfare of your brethren and bring me back again.
Aha, Isai athiruktharshina puustavam.
In the prophetical book of Isaiah.
Aha, inge, yaray naan anupuvainendu, kattare oru kailvi kattukrar.
Here, the Lord is asking us to whom shall I send?
Aha, yaray naan anupuvain?
Whom shall I send?
Idha aandavudhalindu vandhudaana, oru sattam.
This is the voice which came out from God.
Aha, Isaiya, aramadhikaram, nam parkumbodu.
Genesis, Isaiah chapter six.
Aha, ettaavasanathile.
Verse eight.
Yaray naan anupuvain?
Whom shall I send?
Yar namadu kariyamai povan?
Whom will go for us?
Adhirkanaan, idho adiyainirukkaren, enne anupumendu chonnain.
Then said I, he or am send me.
Aha, ingheyum, pida, ivare anupittu, oru adayalathodu thadh thirimbi varacholdrar, adhna adayalan na, siluvay maranam.
Here, to the father, send him and come back with a sign, that is the death of cross.
Avdey adayalam enna?
What is a sign?
Avdey perappukku oru adayalam kodukappadha.
There was a sign given to his birth.
Aha, avdey perappukke, oru adayalam kodukappadha.
There was a sign given to his birth.
Adi enne perappukka adayalam?
What was that sign?
Isaiya, yala madhikaram, padinannaavasanathie parkumbodu.
Isaiah chapter seven verse fourteen.
Aandavaramay, ungelkku oru adayalathikko duppar, oru kannikey, karpavadiyagi, oru kulandhey, peruvaal.
The Lord himself shall give you a sign, behold, a virgin shall conceive and bear a son.
Avdey perappulai, oru adayalam kanappadha.
There was a sign in his birth.
Ipavu thirimbi varano.
Now he should come back.
Aha, ippa thandu dey devan dey, sithathen neravetthamal thirimbi vandhal, adu adayalam alla.
Now, without fulfilling the will of God, if he should come back, it is not a sign.
Esu arputangalay chidhar.
Jesus did miracles.
Adayalangalay chidhar.
He diminished signs.
Visasakalay thurathinara.
He casted demons.
Marithorey eluppinara.
And he resurrected the dead.
Aha, periyaperiyay karigala, allam chidhar.
He did great and great things.
Adi esu chidhar, arputangal, namkutthakakka, adangada.
The miracles which Jesus did is not in our measure.
Aha, vedhathil chollappaduvum, kuda, kurivana, sambavungal matthramay.
The incidents which are cited in the word of God are also very few.
Avar chidhar, arputangalay elininall, indhu olakum kolladu, endu, oru manidanthchollukran.
One man of God says that if the miracles which he has done is written, in this world can suffice.
Andhalavu, avarathalindhu, arputangal, purappattukondaiyundhadu.
To that extent, the miracles proceeded from him.
Over naalu, avar chidhar, allam arputanam.
Every day, what he did was a miracle.
Aha, andha arputangalay, kanakka, adangada, arputangal.
That miracles were without number.
Aha, idellam, oru mukkiamana kariyamagave, illad.
But these were not all important.
Aha, vedam enna chollukkara.
What does the word of God say?
Aha, avar, kadaisi erathle, indha pathram, ningakkudumanal, ningittumendu chollukran.
In his last moments, he says, if this cup is able to depart, later depart.
Aha, aha, andha kariyathle, devan anumarikavillai.
But God did not admit in this manner.
Aha, andha kariyathle, thadha devasithathak, devan kandipaagane, nindukondrunthar.
It was in this place where the God was very strict concerning.
Aagilam, umdriyasithathinbadu, aagakadavudhu, ivareyachoyavu, cholla vittar.
And again, he said, it, I will be done.
Ipva adayalathodu thadha, av thirimbi poona.
Now he has to go back with the sign.
Ratthamsindhinavaraaga, adhalai, marithu, uyiroodi elindhu, avar, adhna adayalam, thirumbo, poikumaran, kumaran, palladu barsethu, poikukkara.
Being shed his blood, and he is died, and he resurrected, and went and sat in the right hand of God, that is a sign.
Aha, evlu, indha puustavutthi, aliirada, ethniyoo, arputangalay chidhar, adhalam mukkiamala, thirimbi pohumporadu, uyirtillanda, avari poiseravendam.
He did innumerable miracles, which are not written in this book, but when he returns with the sign that he is resurrected, he should go.
Marithuthu, kuda mukkiamala?
Not sufficient, he is dead.
Ratthamsindhinadu, kuda mukkiamala?
Not sufficient, he shed this blood.
Avar uyirtalavittal, engu dey prasangam, virudha, endu, powl pesukrar.
Saint Paul priest is saying, that if he is not resurrected, our preaching is in vain.
Aha, uyirtillanda, tha, pidavin, valadu barsethu, poikukaramdi.
Only if he is resurrected, he can go sit on the right hand of the father.
Avan thandu dey kumarne, oru adayalathai, pettukondu thadha varachonnar.
Then even his son, also, he asked to get a sign and come.
Aha, Yakubu, thandu dey kumarne, chollukran, nee poi, marusaidhi konduva?
Jacob told to his son to bring back good news.
Aha, Isai, thandu dey kumarne, chollukran, nee othamaai po, adayalathai vangi konduva?
Jesse told to his son to go run speedily and bring back the pledge.
Namdri otham muddiyam poradu, namdri kaila adayalamirukkuma?
But we finish our race, will there be a sign in the hand?
Namdri othami, idukkiradu.
How was our race?
Adhe nam, indhanakkala, sindikavendidha, avasyam.
That it is needful for us to think about it.
Avargal soomaerukkaraarga?
Are they fine?
Avargal seemamai erukkaraarga?
Are they keeping well?
Aadugal idukkiradu?
How are the flocks?
Neengathirimbi po, ense soluvige?
What will he go back and say?
Aha, ungalay aadugalay, patthi, neengatholuvige?
What will he say about the flocks?
Aha, ungalakku, edukkaramla, patthi, ense soluvige?
What will he say about the ones with you?
Oru purushan, poi, ma, male, poisarukran, vithukolangala.
You say, for example, one husband is going and reaching.
Anghey, ense soluvara?
What will he go and say?
Naan indhu olakavalkile, samaganaamai irundhen?
I had been peaceful in my life for these days.
Naanum, enakkukudukkamanivium, enudhey pilligalum, naangal sabailai, seyonile, arputangalaku, adayalangalaku, mirundho, endu chonnaltha, avan, engay, erangarikam, ulle erangarikam.
If he should say that I am the wife and my children given to me are signs and one does and sign, only then will he get his place in heaven.
Aha, mattavudhi, anghey, erangarikarukkavai, pokkal, kurivu.
And otherwise, there are very few chances for getting opportunities.
Namkutthadevan, edukvarukkaradu, enna, nee indhu olakathli, enna, chidhiyo, thirimbi pohumporadu, onkaila adayalamirukkavendu.
All what the Lord expects from us is, whatever you are doing on this earth, you should have a sign when you go back.
Sadaarnama, oru owner, thandu dey vaalayaltu, oru pannathukuduthu, oru alathukuduthu, vandha, kuduthi, edamaydavamma? Huh? Sign vaydavamma?
Ordinarily, if an owner is giving something, you should go and give it, and get the sign and come, he will say.
Aha, receipt vaydvan, cholluva?
He is asking to get back the receipt.
Nee anghey poonadukken, enna, adayalan, kapa?
He will ask us to, what is the sign of you going there?
Aha, nammasavile, kudakilkpidiyadu, sala pilligal, rupan.
Even in our church, there will be disobedient children.
Avakoyiluktham, poona, cholluva?
They will say that I have gone only there.
Odane, amma pakka, pang, enne, enna prasangam, abidam.
Then the parents will ask us to what message he was today.
Sudarichavu, varavaliyala, atta, kettuvuva?
If he is very alert, then he will ask the people on the way itself.
Oru silar, appidi, ladu, naan poona, appidi, enjaavu, cholluva, ena, pooga, anala, samalikara.
Some children are not so, because he will manage the situation that he is not gone.
Aha, nam, indhu olakathila, devan, namyay anupirukkara, namkutthorutthaimeruk.
We have been sent by God and we have a due time.
Indha timekulla, namyennalamo, chaila, aha, thirimbi pohumporadu, adayalal, ense, kudada, poega, kudada.
Within this time, we can do anything, but when we go back, we should not go back without a sign.
Nehemiaavin visyathle, andha raja kattukrar, naan unney anupuran, om prayana, evlalalavu, evlalal, nee thirimbi varava, adesolunkara.
In the matter concerning Nehemia, the king says, I will send you, but you say as to how long will it take for your journey, when will you return?
Naan unney anupuran.
I am sending you.
Nehemia, rendhamadhikara, aravasanathila, parkumbodu.
Nehemia, chapter two verse six.
Aha, raja, enne, parthu, om prayanam, ettenenal, sellem?
The king looked unto me, asked me as to how long will be that journey?
Nee eppooradu, thirimbi varuva?
When will thou return?
Aha, kosinabarka, nee, om vaalkai payanay, evlalal, poho, nee, eppo, anta, thirimbi varuva, kattarkakkar, namdritakata, ense, soluva?
God is asking us as to how long will your life's journey be, and when will you come back to me, if the Lord asks us, what will we say?
Omnudhey vaalkai, jayamai muddikai, nee, evlalal, kudutha, muddichiruvan, keta, neengay, ethanal, soluvige?
If the Lord asks you to, how many days shall I grant you, that you might really live your life victoriously, what, how many days will you say?
Enne, yasithathinbadu, nee parivournamasenji, nee, indhu bhoomile, unkukthirindha, sathiyathinbadu, vaandhu, nee, jayathodu, muddichthi, anta, varuvan, chonnai, unkakethanal, vandhukketa, neengathanasen, kapiya?
According to my will, if you victoriously finish your race and come back to me, if he asks us to how many years you need, how many years will you ask?
Chollangala, bible shadi, jana?
This is Bible study.
Nee, evlalal, kudutha, neengay, oru parishutavana, mariyavu?
How many days will it be given to you, that you might become a saint?
Onnu vandhaga, enne, keshathukittapodho, abidigaringala?
Are you saying, I don't want anything if you gather?
Shathukittal, alavu, oruvarum, seyrakkudada, oliyil, vasamunakka, devantapoi, cherunna, namu, oru oliyam, maranada, po, ense, chimudiyavu? Share, muddiyavu?
If you have to go reach the Lord, who is with, he, who is in light, only if we become light, we can go join him.
Avarathil, evlalavenu, irul, illai?
There is no darkness in him at all.
Charina, nayantinana, irul illa, abidin, choddingala, than sagodharunne, pahaykavavun, oliyil, naddakkaranendu, chonnalum, avan, irile, kattukkara, irulil, kattukkara.
Do you say that you have no darkness? He who hates his brother is how much ever, he says, he is in light, he is in darkness.
Jerusalemukku, poittu varradu, nee, poi, andha karigala, success pantin, thirimbi varradu, ke, evlalal, aukun, keta, avan, odane, cholla, enakkay, arunati, ruddinala, evlalati, ruddo, edavu, naal, cholla, evlalal, aukun, cholla.
When the king asked him, master, how many days will it take for you to go to Jerusalem, rectify and come back, he is saying that he will, if he is given six hundred and twenty days, it is possible.
Evlavu, kaalam, sellemendu, naan, rajaavukkichonnain.
He told the king as to how many days will take.
Appalu, enne, anupavu, avarku sithamai ched.
Then he delighted to send him.
Ongelkakethanavusha vena?
How many years you need?
Enno, renduva, sirna, settlepanirivangala, ellame?
Another two years, will you set everything right?
Oru manshana, settlepanacholi, ha, Isaiya, muppatiala madhikaram, chonnai, oh, nu, kandhaladu, timee, solamattinta, kathil, aandavara, pathu, panin, josham, kudutha.
In Isaiah chapter thirty eight, turn to a man, he asked him, master, how many days will you want to set your life in order, then he, the Lord himself gave him fifteen years.
Avar, nanachari, ivan, periyaraja, periyaperiyasadhana, chindhirukran, orainal, settlepanirvan, cholittu, nee, chikramah, om vutthukariyathu, orungubuduthu, nee, pala, kematai, marithu, povan, choluvuttha.
The Lord thought that he being a great king, he will sit right at his house, even in one day, he sits at then house in order, for thou shalt die and not live.
Esakiya, oru nalamansham.
Esakiya was a good man.
Aha, kadaisi erathle, kujnukolapavadiyam, arna.
But in his last days, he became a man of infusion.
Aha, neengavandhey, sarathrathapadcham, unkukthiriyam.
If you read this history, you can learn it.
Madhulla, koopthirinada, odane, poitripa?
If, when he was called, he would have gone immediately.
Madhulla, avunkel, allamay, success.
Everything was successful in his life.
Nallayeluppala, arindha kalangal.
That was a time when he was fully successful.
Aha, ellam, poitturukkum, appo, koopthirinada, cholirpa, ippa, vandharan, cholirpa?
When he was called at that time, if he was called, he would say, he would come.
Aha, aha, last, kujnukalal, avan, vandhutthadu, thaduvar, aramcha.
But in the last few days, he began to stumble.
Adeni, enalavuttilim, padikala, rajaakalim, padikala?
That you can read both in chronicles and.
Indha title, vandhu, nee, settlepan, nee, kalamunavane, avanukke, settlepana, muddiyaladu.
When he was asked to settle at that time, he was not able to settle it.
Ipavu poona, adayalangondu, poomdiyadu?
Now, if he should go back, he cannot take the sign.
Aha, jayathodu, othatham muddichin, solamudiyadu, poi?
He cannot say that he finished his race victoriously.
Ongelkakethanavu vena?
How many days will it take for you?
Oru vishaya, nekudutha, na, success, ayaravunadu, chollaringala?
Are you saying after a year, I will be successful?
Neediitha vaalvai, naan, kettukondrukran.
I am asking God for long days.
Evlalal?
How many days?
Huh? Nourvisha?
Is it hundred years?
Evlakalan, ungal, avan, ketta, odane, choltha, enak, evlal, time, kudungan, naan, vandhran, karak, vandhran.
When he was asked, he immediately said, you give me so many days, and he will come back on it.
Esu, oru kurikappadha kaalam, kodukappadha.
Jesus was given in a pointed time.
Sariyavana, erathle, andha kariyathu, muddich, karak, title, poittha.
At the point in time, he fulfilled everything and returned back.
Avargal, munda vashana, uliyan, chonnam, munda vashana?
It was only three and a half years that he did the ministry.
Aha, kilkpidilangaradu, padinettu, vashadu.
But obedience was eighteen years.
Appidi, jana? Naan, chonnadu, karak, jana?
Is it correct?
Karakda? Petthorukke, kilkpidinadu, padinettu, vasham, uliyatla, kilkpidinadu, munda vasham.
He obeyed his parents for eighteen years and obeyed for ministry three and a half years.
Padinandu, vaydhalai, avar, tedi, kandupidichu, viddu, kuttu, vandhanga, adhirkapinbu, avar, ense, idirundhar, petthorukke, kilkpidindirundhar.
They searched and brought him, and he was twelve years after that, he was obedient to his parents.
Adha, amaydin, kalangal.
That was the time of silence.
Aha, appidiye, kilkpidindukkanday, irundhar.
He was just obedient till then.
Adhirkapinbu, pidavukke, kilkpidira, maritaga.
After that, he began to obey his father.
Adhu, munda vasham.
That was for three and a half years.
Petthorukke, kilkpidinadu, veda, paramapidavukke, kilkpidinadu, avari, puranaraga, machinadu.
More than to obey to his parents, he obeying to the father to three and a half years.
Priyavangal, kellerkau? Padinettu, vasham, petthorukke, kilkpidinadu, veda, muna, varidham, avar, paramapidavukke, kilkpidinadu, veda, adhu, avari, puranathukkina. Pallavidangalile, neengal, kilkpidindhu, ungalay vaalkile, kilkpidil, kattukondrukala?
You would have been obeying in all your aspects and will learn to obedience.
Aha, pidavukki, evathu, oru, kilkpidindukkaramo, adu matthramay, namipooranathukkina, raga, inuthichellum.
But how much ever we are obeying to the father alone can take us to perfection.
Yatra, om, muna, madhikaram, parkumbodu?
When we read Exodus chapter three.
Anghey, Mose, kattar sandikirar.
The Lord met Moses.
Aha, avanun, kuda, avanuttilim, indhey, oru, kariyathu, thadha, kattarchonnan.
He went to him, the Lord said such a thing.
Naan, unney, anghey, parvunadukka, anupapogiren.
I am going to send you to Pharaoh.
Muna, madhikaram, padinavasanathila, parkumbodu?
Chapter three, verse ten.
Neesrevel pittrara, ye, enjanathai, egithillirindha, adayathiverumbadi, unney parvunaduthi, anupuvain, va, endrar? Aha, unney parvunadukke, anupuvain, va, endrar.
He said, come now therefore, that I will send thee to Pharaoh.
Ingel, la, neengay, parkumbodu, ellarame, kar, sari, sari, chonnadu, neengay, parkala?
Here, everywhere we see that everyone is saying, all right.
Aha, taavi, dey, thandu dey, tagapun, anupumodhu, sari, poittu, varan, choltha.
When David was sent by his father, he said, I will go.
Aha, Joseph, anupumodhu, avan, naan, pogiren, endu chonnan.
Even when Joseph was sent, he said, I will go.
Esu, vay, anupumodhu, naan, pogiren, endu chonnan.
Even when Jesus was sent, he said, I will go.
Aha, Moseen dey visyathle, kujnukthadu, mathangal, thavukkatiyavandhuvuttha?
But in that kind of Moses, we see that there was some language came in his life before self.
Avan, chollu, padinavara, vasanathila, naan, anghey, porudukka, alathu, vada, idukkala, enak, enthavidamana, tagriyangiraya, naan, varamdiyantam.
And he is telling that I am not worthy at all, I am not eloquent and so on.
Aha, naan, unney, anuppinan, enbadu, keduve, adayalam.
He is saying that this is the sign that I am sending you.
Neengay, kattar, cholluva, naan, ungal, irupan, naan, unakku, oru adayalan, daran.
And he is telling that I will give you a sign that I am sending you.
Aandavara, adayalam, kodukrar.
And God is giving a sign.
Periyamalavle, nam, adayalan, kodubundu, vundu, avar, namkakal, kattari, evlu, arputangal, adayalangal, chidukundu, vandhupan?
Beloved, we should become a sign, because God is doing signs and wonders for us.
Indha, kethanavet, namdri othathai, jayamai, odi, kondurukram?
Today, how many of us are running victorious in our race?
Namdri otham, idukkiradu?
How was our race?
Naadukchilla, vasanangal, unkukthi, chollukran.
I would like to say some verses to you.
Namdri otham, enbadu, nalavathutla, odi, kondai, irukvendam.
Our race should be run in a good manner.
Otham, vandhu, slowpanavay, kudada?
We should not slow down our race.
Indhu, vithul, chollaponam, thamodikakudada?
And nextly, if we had to say, we should not tarri.
Otham, thamodichidhu, abidin, chonnai? If the race is tarrying, then means you are going towards failures. In reading Exodus chapter five. The race of Sisera was tarrying. The race of his chariot was tarrying. His mother is asking as to why my son's chariot is delaying. And she began to even lament. When the chariot began to slow down itself, she understood that there is something wrong with the son. Reading Exodus chapter five, verse twenty-eight. The mother of Sisera looked at the window. And she began to lament. Why is this chariot so long in coming? What is the reason for the wheels of his chariots which went to tarry? Dear beloved, if our race is going to tarry, then we are going towards failures. If one should tarry, it means he is defeated. Two of them are running, if one should tarry, then it does defeat one. We should not have the sign of defeat in our race. Our race should be increased than in before times. When you see the olden days' car, it will go very slow. Have you seen it? Even now those are existing. He will keep rotating and such cars were in faiths too. There was a car called Maurice Minor. Maurice Minor. That was a green color and you should rotate with it. Before the servants of God should come in, the driver will keep rotating with it. Now a car like that? Now is it so? Even when you enter, if you put a switch on the remote, the doors will be open. And being seated in the cars, there are vehicles without gear, even without gear, the vehicle is running. How much in advance they have come? Now cars are running without control of speed at all. In a car race, it was only the big, the car was started and it was not found at all. All the others are standing somewhere behind, but he is gone. All of them were had doubted. How can he go so fast? Finally, they, it was, became a report and they checked the engine. He overcame but asked us to why how can you go so fast? For every vehicle, there is a CC and he, they went even without that CC. Finally, when they checked it. The engine of a small flight, he had set in this car. When he started, the car, it went in flight's speed. In this times, see how to how our races. Is your race tarrying or the chariot also tarrying? If our race is tarrying, then it's the sign of defeat and if you go back, you are defeated and you will not win the prize. Nextly. We should not stop the race. Even he asks you to go run the race, you should not stop in any way. You know about the competition between the hare and the tortoise. When both of them competing went. Before the boundary, the hare stopped because the tortoise will take time for it to come. Nextly, before it could wake up, it was announced that the turtle won the victory. Like this in your faith race, you should not stop. Problems may come. Sickness may come. And the devil's problems may come. And there will be accusations. And you will be persecuted evenly. And they will say you are not worthy. And the people who are commenting will keep comments. Now you are running in the race. The others outside will listen. He will say that he will, he will never overcome. There will be a great crowd to discourage you, only a small crowd to encourage. If Pakistan is going to play in India. Not all of them who are favoring Pakistan will come to India, only a few of people will be coming and the rest of them will be Indians when they will be discouraging them. In this path, only there are people who are encouraging, a very few. But to discourage you, our majority people. You should never listen to that voice. Satan has kept a great group of people to discourage. This will not happen to you. You cannot do it. They will only speak like this. This cannot come to you. You cannot win. Like this, they will say deep things to discourage you, at this time, you should be very strong enough. One person was placed to a place of shooting. And the fruits that was kept there was his mark. That particular fruit should be shot down. Now when he was step placed there. All of them were in order. They are telling everyone. There the fruit is. The leaves are all seen there. Yes, it is seen. Only one man skipped simply. What other, do you see the leaf or not? I can see the leaf. And all of them laughed. When there are so many leaves on the tree, this man said that there is no leaf. Then they asked us to what to see. I can see only the fruit, nothing else, he said. We are all seeing around the leaves, but his aim was only the spot. You should see only the goal and not the people who are whistling, encouraging, who are discouraging or accusing or faulting you, I should be fixed upon him. With no reason, you should stop your race. Second Kings. Verse twenty-four. There the shindamites says, you run now, I pray thee, you should not hinder anywhere. Looking at her. You take, you run now. Until I command you, you should not stop anywhere where you run. Because the child is dead. He should be almed alive. And there is no time for him to go and inquire anybody on the roadside. In this place where we are doing the bull of the father, there is no time for us to go and ask the welfare of our relatives and stop a race. And to her, the child's life was important. Somehow the child should be risen up. At that time, that prophet should be brought to her house. Therefore, she says, slack not the riding. With no reason, you should stop with riding. Dear beloved, there will be many problems in our race, but in no sense we should stop the race. Some of them have run well. But now saying that such people are saying these things and accusations, they are stopping with their race. And to the Galician church, it is said that the church had run well. They will give even their eyes. They had so much of love towards them, they have kept them even as God. To that extent, they had a great hope and faith upon Paul. In reading Galatians chapter four. Verse fourteen. You received me as an angel of God even as Christ Jesus. If it is servants of God, he will even keep on his head and go. But as this went by. The problems of them increased. And flesh entered. Where the flesh comes in, there begins failures. Fleshly talks, fleshly natures and fleshly actions will automatically bring us to a stoppage. Will you read in five seventeen? Five seven. He did run well. It's a good church which runs well. Even the sufferings which our people have suffered in olden times would be marvelling. But now if you should consider, there is no comparison at all. How it will be? Many of them are like this. We have left the blessings which he had in the beginning. There are a group of people who have left the first law. There are a group who have left their first works. This is the state of the Galician church. When they did run well, then they gave room to flesh, when they began to consume each and other, their race was in them. Our race should not be a race of hindrance. You should play your life and finish your race till the end. You run well. Don't stop with your race. Taking cheese and the parched corn, if all his friends have eaten, come back and how it will be? Did he do like that? Did he do like that? When anybody asked him on the way, he just kept straight his race. You run well. He straightly ran to the military into the war field. The Lord has kept a path for us. It is in this path that we should run. It might be the only path, it might be boring to you, but you should not be worried about this because it's the path that the Lord has determined for you. That is run with patience, the race that is set before us. That is a race which is set for us. You have not fixed it, but the Lord had fixed it for you. It is the Lord which has kept you in that race. You should look unto him who is the author and finisher of our faith. Do not look at the relatives and run. Do not look at the servants of God and run. Do not look at the believers and run. Do not go to the theatre and run. Do not go towards pax. Do not go run towards defeat. In the race, we should run looking unto him who is the author and finisher of our faith, we should run with patience the race. Even if the race is tarrying, it will go waste. If the race has stopped, the race we have done, he that is gone and win. After running well, if you should change your path, it will go and win. Or otherwise, you can stay well. If you had run the race thus far and you change your path, then all the race that you have run thus far is and win. You should run in the path which the Lord has set before you. The Lord has kept every path for everyone. If you are called to be a slave, be a slave. If you are called to be free, then you be free. In whichever path, the Lord has kept for you, go joyously in it. Can you go like that? Just think and see. We are going out somewhere and when we are asked, we say we came there for a change. It is only man who is looking for a change, none of the other creations look for a change. Reading nineteen Psalm. It is said about the sun, that it is more delightful to run in its path, it is like the bright groom coming out of its changing and rejoice it as a strong mantle on a race. From the time the Lord has created the sun, even until now, it has a path and without boring, it's running in its race. If we should to saying that it is boring and changes race, what happened? It is rejoicing to run its race. The two, it's coming out as a bright. One thing is, it's coming as a bright groom. Nextly, it's coming as a strong man. When the hot sun would come, you see as to how bright it is. Is it saying that I have gone on this path and there is something wrong, some problem than the earth? I have crossed the cold lands. I have crossed the north pole or the south pole, it never has complaints, it's not like people like us because we will flee. He does never ask for transfer thus far. It has never said he does not want to. Every day whether you are waking up on north, it's going in its correct ways. One day alone, it stopped there for forty minutes and because God had commanded it to break down. It is delighted to run in its race. Every day when it's setting out, it's setting out as the bright. And then the other angle, it's running as a strong man. It's not bothered that the rain has come and the clouds are covered and the, and the clouds, antique clouds have come, it's not bothered about anything because it's running because God has commanded it. In our race, we should not run without any rejoicing. We should not stop a race. You should not change the race. If you do anything like this, and then all the races and win. That is when Philippines to fourteen. Paul is writing about his race. I have the great joy in the coming of the Christ because I have not run in my race and win. I have never grieved in my life that I have run my race and win. And I have a great joy that I have run in good. Do we have this rejoicing? And just think and see. Vincent Paul is speaking Galatians two two.
Vincent Paul is speaking in Galician two two.
Nan oodukradum, oodinidum, vinagaada, badikke, endhu solukkada.
That by any means, I should run and had run not and win.
Na oodukradum, oodinidum.
That I should run or I had run.
Ettenavsha, na oor nnaadu, ippo oodikirukkada, enakku vinagaada.
That which I had run thus far and what I am running now is not win.
Evlavu taliva, avr tanudhe ootathakurithi, nichimulavara irukkada.
How clearly man is having a shwati concerning his race.
Anan, endhu sunneli, namadee ootam remba kavnamaa arukkada.
They find any situation, our race should be very careful.
Original allan, the ootam muddiyadangra.
Some of them are saying they cannot run.
Adu lotthinudhe kootangai.
That are the group of lot.
Lotthasolukkada, andha malakko oodipo.
And to lot, he said, run to the mountain.
Avan enasana, andha ollam, malakko oodipo, enala, muddiyadu.
He says, I cannot run to the mountain.
Adi, huma padthambo, padthambo, ni gopakla.
In Genesis nineteen, nineteen, we can read this.
Andha malakko oodipo, enala muddiyadinta, adhoor, avundhe life, oru priya tholvi unda aramitha.
When he was asked to flee to the mountain, he said he cannot do so, from that, there was a great feeling in his life.
Edhavudh sunneli, yaravudh chunnadu, enala, edhavudh oru prachanile, vyadiile, ellavutal nerukkamana sunneligale, tangudee ootathai yaravudh niruthirindal, ellavutal slowponirindal, maribodi, ungalde, dayvan neemitha pathi le, thirumavum, magilchiyodu oru, indhakini, ungalay opukkudungai.
In some situation or some accusation or some false reports, if any of you have stopped with your race, have slowed down your race, today you rectify it and come back to that race.
Orunnaal, tanudhe, naanke, valiva pillagunodu, Philippa engra, tagapun vittile, kana pattan.
One day, Philip was found with his four young children in his house.
Naanke, valiva pillagal, ulle vittle, avan irunda.
He was found.
Naalun, naalun, valiva pillai.
He was found in the house of four virgins who were in his house.
Enna nanduchai?
What happened?
Tidirunna, orunnaal, andharu sonar, aviyanu solukkada, ni vanantra markhamai po.
One day, suddenly, the spirit of God is asking him to go towards the wilderness.
Eva vanantra thukvandittha.
And he came to the wilderness.
Anga oru radam poitthirukka.
And there was a chariot going on.
Ministrudhe, radam poitthirukka.
And the minister was going on.
Ah, orame, ippa aviyanu solukkada, andha radathodo, poi, chendukkada.
Immediately, the spirit of God is asking to go join the chariot.
Eunna, eunna, enakku kudukla? Huh? Eunna kura radathakuduthu, ni poi, poi, stra, fasta poi, yalal, chedun, chudula, ni oodi poisare.
He didn't, he was not given a chariot and asked to go join the chariot, but he asked him to run to the chariot.
Na irukkara, unno oru kuda.
I am there with you.
Namalamari, alate solidha, enna solirukka?
If he is told to such a person as us, what will he say?
Ena, entha solidha, enna, enna, sengjerupa, ni ungalate, enna, enna, sengjerupa.
What will I have done or what would you have done if it's told to you?
Huh? Ebedu irukun, yosia.
Just imagine the situation.
Philippa, oodi poisarendukkada.
And Philip ran and joined it.
Kattar solitada.
The Lord has said.
Oray ootam, putittha, radathodo, poisarendittha.
He ran fast and joined the chariot.
Nam, indha naatkulile, namadee ootathai oor nna, orana.
These days, if we are asked to run, we have to run.
Muddiyadu, solakkuada.
We should not say we cannot.
Dayvan, unakku muddiyun, chuli, viswastodha, unni kunduvarada.
Because the Lord has trusted you, it's possible with you.
Eulakalarnu, edukkumbo, evan, CEO, eruslemma, maata muddiyav, right, okay, avan, select pandira.
When he is taking you out of the world itself, he is saying that he can change your sign in Jerusalem.
Ingavanditthi, enala muddiyadu, enala muddiyav, enala vendha, veyo oru, epullan, ni solithu kolapukkada, dayvan deetthattu, ni sethakekkuada.
After coming here, you should not say that it is not possible with you and it cannot do it and destroy the plan of God.
Chari, epuladu, adayala thavayittu vangra.
Now, he is asking you to get a sign.
Taavi, degatirima, vittu poona.
What, how did David go back?
Tagapun ketta, adayala, elitinnpara, araman, oru adayala, gatta, anad, dayvan, avan, singh asana thale, kontuvi, ukkaravichu, adayala mai, maathinar.
He only wanted to return back with the pledge of the father, but God had given him the sign of his throne.
Idhena, yosseppukkun, nandadu.
This is what happened to Joseph too.
Po, marusiadi kunduva, marusiadi, epun kunduna?
He asked him to bring him word back again, when did he bring back?
Marusiadi kunduvaru, moru, engar kaiyav.
When, see, when he brought back the news.
Faruundre, aranmanila, second posting, lakhandhuka.
He was seated in the second posting of the pharaoh.
Adhalan, marusiadi, na, enna?
Therefore, what is the reply?
Chumma, oru kayil thuvainthu varudhala.
Not just right in getting a sign.
Ootathai jayamayu, mutichirukka.
You should finish the race victoriously.
Adhana, adayala.
That is the sign.
Ni ootama ippo, muddinju varumbodu, edhavada va, adayala thoduva.
You run fast and come back with a sign.
Moon adayala, thamungal, nan chodra.
I tell you of three signs.
Raga, bondhe, tanudhe, vittu, vandhe, anavavukkada, oru adayala, kudungan, keta.
Rehab unto the spies who came to her house, she asked for a sign.
Ninga, ondhe, ene, sarapadutha, mattinga, ene, kaapathung, engar, adayala, kuduthu poon, solu.
You give me a sign that you have come here and you will save my life.
Avan, orana, tanukaila, ene, edhakuduthranga, chavap, kayira, channela, kettive, idha, adayala, kayil kuduthirupida.
Immediately, they tied out a red thread in the window and said that this is the sign.
Ah, adhutha kaayin.
Nextly, Kane.
Tanudhe, sagavanna, kundittha.
He killed this brother.
Ah, ippa, unkuk, bangaramana, saabu, vandurundrichi.
Now, there was a great curse upon him.
Ippa, andhattho, pora.
Now, he goes to God.
Ni, retta, saabu, enala, thangamudiyadu.
The curse which you have given is hard for me to bear.
Ene, pakkara, nichima, ene, kundru.
He who sees me will definitely kill me.
Avan, andharu sonar, ellala, avan, kollamada, na, oru adayala, porra, ni, tapi, poonchukka.
Then the Lord said, no, he will not kill you because I will put a sign upon you, you will escape.
Adu bola.
Like this.
Indha olakathla, olakam, maamisum, pisas, namala, merkollam, muddiyadu, appidi, namamela, oru parisutthavi, anadayala aruke, adhutha, ippa, namal, enjidrige, kaapathikundu, eva arukka.
That the flesh, while then said, may not touch us, the Lord has given us a Holy Spirit, that is a sign given to us, it is preserving us.
Andha adayala, ellana, seyvan, unni, onulamakirukka.
If that sign is not upon us, then which craft would put you to not?
Andha adayala, ellana, manisha, unni, uyirudha, villingirukka.
If that sign is not upon you, man would have swallowed you alive.
Andha adayala, ellana, pisas, unni, thukki, engi, kupeladipotupirukka.
If that sign is not on you, then Satan would have cast you into some dustbin.
Ka, anndaki, kaayinukke, oru adayala, poruthu, dayvan, tapuvitha.
God gave a sign from Cain and he delivered him.
Namakun, gudeshala, adayalangala, kattar kudukkada.
And unto us also, the Lord is giving us such a sign.
Ne, saulukku, gudha, oru adayala, garchidu, ni, poi, indha, ndharathla, unakun, enna narakku, iduve, adayala.
Even unto Saul, there was a sign given to him, you go, such things will happen in such a place and this is a sign.
Ina, Esakyaraja, ukke, soham, kadekun, kattar solitara.
And the Lord said unto King Esakyar, that he will be healed.
Ah, moona, nal, ni, dayavali, thukbo, vansoltara.
And he said, on the third day, you will go to the temple of God.
Eunna, doubt, vendrichi.
And he had it out.
Apa, enakka, edhav, adayala, kudunga?
Then, Lord gave me some sign.
Ah, oru, enna, adayala, venunna?
Immediately, he asked to what sign he wanted.
Surian, munnaal, poonuma, pinnaal, poonuma?
He asked if the sun should go forward or back.
Ebedu oru kosin.
What a question it was?
Iba, aal, serious, chethupora, kondition, kuda, remba taliva, arukka.
Now, he was in a serious condition to his death and he is very clear.
Ellala, munukku, poona, adu, fasta, poittho, enakka, enakka, enesiga, surian, nervous, kunduva.
If the sun is gone, forward, then it will go very fast, but you bring back the dial.
Ninga, scientist, ninga, kettina?
If you should ask the scientist.
La, scientific, bookla, ninga, padchupathingina?
If you read the scientific books.
Elavda, vanayi, ilai, ilai, space, nananda, kariyala, ninga, padchupathingina?
Or if you'll read the books of concerning the space.
Surian, ittunamuni, nairao, slowa, irukkane, oru result.
There is a result as to the sun is slowed down for so many hours.
Andre, yosuavin, kalathle, ittunamuni, nairan, endhu, adhutha, Esakyavin, nairathuke, forty minutes, oru time, endhu.
One is in the time of Esakyar, that the sun was slowed down and in the time of Esaky, Joshua, it was slowing down.
Ah, rendu, nairan, na, adu, slowa.
And it was these two times that it was slowed down.
Aal, saagaramari, gakakra, aludukkadi, kari, thamudun, karata, solu, munnaal, maavanna, surian, pathu, bha, ittrimby, oratunna.
And he was at the time to death, but when he was crying also, he said, let the sun turn back ten degrees.
Ippidi, dayvan, ni, ellavo, adayala, vangi, vela, vangi, irukka, adayala, vangi, parisutthavi, padchidukka, adayala, vangi, kalyana, irukke, adayala, vangi, ennalamoni, sengjerukka, anan, ni, ootatham, muddikumbo, honi, oru adayala, thoda, poona, avarunne, accept, poonvar.
Like this, you have got the sign from God for your job, for your marriage, for all the things which you have, you've got the sign from God, but at the time of your race, at the end of your race, you should go with the sign.
One.
Firstly.
Viswasa thikaathukonden, adayala, thoda, oru, oru, muddikana.
You should run, finish the race with the sign that you have kept the faith.
Rendha.
Secondly.
Aludhu, aludhu, indha, oru, oru, muddikkuada, sandoshuma, oru, oru, muddikana.
You should not fish the race with tears, but with joy.
Mundra.
Thirdly.
Turchiyidu, oru, oru, muddikkuada, nachchiyidu, oru, oru, muddikana.
You should not end the race with evil news, but with good news.
Indha, moon, kari, illa, pathchathle, unakka, adayala, illa, ni, thootu, poona, oru, na ba.
When these things are not found in you, then you have no sign, it's true, you are defeated.
Rendu timothi, naanke, yel, parkumbele.
Second timothi, four seven.
Nalla porattati, poradi neen.
I have fought a good fight.
Ootathai, muddithai.
And I have finished my course.
Ebedu muddithai?
How?
Viswasa thai, kaathukondai.
I have kept the faith and finished.
Edhu, mudali, enakka, needyin, greedam, pakka, pothukkada.
Henceforth, it is laid there for me a crown of righteousness.
Edhu, chethamma, besaradu, le, ootathai, jayam, muddithen, engra, nichim, ullo, oru mansan, chodra.
This is not the one who is dead speaking, but the one who has finished his race and he was having the.
Madal, adayala.
This is the first sign.
Viswasa thikaathukondai.
I have kept my faith.
Edhu, illama, indha, adayala, illama, unakka, entry, kere.
With this sign, there is no entry for you.
Ah, on, on, unde, ootathani, viswasta, kaathukkada.
At the end of your race, you should finish with faith.
He who is winning, he will automatically lift his hands. Nobody is asking him to lift his hands but with the internal. When there is a voice coming from out of you saying, I have kept the faith, you are finishing victoriously. If you have this sign, it is alright. It's true, he had failures in his life. But he was entered into the list of heroes of faith. He was, he had failures. But at the end of his race, you can see that his has grown up. Although before the sight of man, you have seen to be failed but before God, you should be victorious. Secondly. Acts twenty twenty four. I decide to finish my course with joy. Crying and crying, if you finished the race when my mother died, she finished her race with tears, what's the reason for it? Because I am leaving my children going. When you finish the race, you should finish with joy saying that I am going to see my face of my Lord and not be grieved concerning your children that you are leaving them. When you finish the race, you should say that you should not be worried about me, I am going to see my Lord and I am going to be with my Jesus and should finish your race with joy, are you going to go with cry? You should finish the race with joy. That is why he says, I am not mindful of anything. At the time when you finish the race, you should not have anything whether your wife or your husband or your parents, children or your oxen or your cattle, none of these should come into your mind. I decide to finish my course with joy. Firstly, you should finish your race saying that I have kept my faith, secondly, you should finish the race with joy. Second Samuel chapter eighteen. Your race should finish with good news. That I have kept my consecration. That I have kept the fellowship of the saints. I have overcome this day. I have overcome the world. I have overcome the flesh. Such a good news should be found in you. Reading in second Samuel chapter eighteen. He is saying that if you have good news, you run. Second Samuel chapter eighteen verse twenty two, he is saying, my son, if you do not have good tidings, then what's this if you are running? And to Joab, he is asking. Then he said, Ahimas, the son of Zadok, he said to Joab saying, you do not run because you do not have good tidings. Was twenty five. Until the, until David, the watchman who was standing in the fourth east leaning, one, Gohan is coming. And the king is waiting. What's the good news? He is not able to go back to his home and sit down, he is standing in the dog step. He is saying, being in the gate, he is asking us too, what's the news, why is he coming? Was twenty five and he is saying. Then the king is saying, if he be alone, there is tidings in his mouth. Then how is the king's expectation? He is expecting for good tidings to come. He sent you to this world. He saved you. He has given your family. He has given your children. He has given you a vehicle. He has given you a house. He has given you health. Every time you close your eyes and kneel down, he has been giving you. Now everything is given and closing your project is going to take you away. And your time is going to get over. When you finish, what does he expect? You should say good news and when he will say, well done, faithful and good servant, you enter into the pleasure of my master. Then the king said, if he be alone, he bringeth good tidings. Now another man came. And that watchman is saying. Another man is also coming, he said. And the king said, he is, in his mouth is also good tidings. Even twenty six verse we see, he bringeth tidings too. Now both of them are drawing near. The race is going to get over and they are going to come the king. As he is running, the watchman is saying. Now two of them are drawing close. And the watchman said, there is one more who is running in the foremost, his running looks like Ahimas, the son of Zadok. And he exactly says. Zadok and Kumar and Agimas. And the watchman says that one man of the two is coming fast and one is like the high master, the son of Zadok. And the king said, he is a good man and committed with good tidings. The king's expectation, the father's expectation is all the same, that you should finish the race with joy and you should keep the faith. He is come. And his race is over. The king came and asked, what's the news? And he said, when I was starting, there was a great tumult, but I do not know what it was. For this, did you run so far? Did we run the race before? And the king said, when I was starting, there was a great tumult, but I do not know what it was. For this, did you run so far? Did we run the race before? In verse twenty nine, he says, the king is asking, is all well and as to how the situation is, he is telling, when I started, there was a great tumult, I don't know what was. The king was tensed up. You have run all the race and it's a waste. And I thought that you are a good believer. And I said that you are a good worker. And the king thought that he will have good tidings and he thought he is a good man and coming from the war field and so much a distance, he is telling, that he does not know what it was and the king looking at him said, turn aside and stand there. Was thirty, he says, turn aside and stand there. What's the use of running? All the concerts tricked you, you ran even without drinking water, what's the use of your running? Next second, he came. And Kushi had come home and said. And Kushi, although he came, he overtake him and came, he did not care for it. When he came. Was thirty one. And the first word that he said is, tidings, my lord, the king. As soon as he came, he did not say any other word, tidings, my lord, the king. This is what the Lord expects. If we go running there and say, what shall I do, what's the use? Kushi means he is an Ethiopian. It means he is dark. He is an Ethiopian. You might be dark in this world without any beauty or any talents but when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings. You might not be beautiful. The hair will not be beautiful. The lips will not be beautiful. There is no white skin. But this is not a matter. However, this other lie might be found in the world, when you finish the race, you finish with good tidings. Curling your head and fashioning yourself with all the designs of the world and failing in this world, life, there is no use, if you finish the race with good tidings, it's sufficient. Do not look at me because I am dark. Colorless, this is not a matter. Colorless is not a matter. This is not a matter at all. Our policy is, there is no form of godliness. Why is this man who is called good man, who is Ahimas, could not good good tidings? His father's name was Zadok. Zadok means man full of just. That is why when the son of Zadok is coming, he said, he is of good family. Father was a Zadok. But the old name of Zadok was Ahimas. His son was Ahimas. The son of Zadok was Ahimas. It is Ahimas who ran and without any message. Father was Zadok, who is a just person, but the son Ahimas is the son of anger. The brother of anger. What meaning it is? If you give room for anger, strife and wrath and bitterness in your life, then you will finish the race but you will not have good tidings. Do not be a brother or younger brother to anger. What's the use of you being a brother to anger? We are brethren to Christ. If you be a brother to anger, then your race will be over but you will not have a message. But this Ethiopian, although he was black in color, he had no form of comeliness, he had good message within him. You run fast. And bring back a sign. Jesus, as resurrection, in his resurrection, got a sign and went to the right hand of God. We should also finish our race, keeping the faith and with good tidings and with. Although this is a, it is given us into the hands of God. Let us all close our eyes. The Lord is going to give us grace these days. Why is this truth given to us? If we had tarried in this race, the Lord is giving us a warning. In situations, we would have stopped our race but the Lord is asking us to warn us to run. All those who say that I want to finish my race with a sign and victoriously close your eyes and kneel down. In the race that is appointed for me, help me to run with patience. In any situation, I should not tarry. I should not stop in any situation. Leaving the path that God has determined, I should not go in another path. Like the sun as the bright room, as a strong man, I should run perfectly in my path. Lord, when my race is over. I should finish it. I should finish with joy. Let's all open our mouth and ask, Lord, give me such a grace. To the percentage that truth comes to that percentage. And now itself, let us ask of the Lord. He will give it now. When you finish the race, you should go with joy. Amen, in the water, they send those to the water. Amen, in the water, they send those to the water. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the. He is saying that if you have good news, you run. Then he said, my son, if you do not have good tidings, then what's this if you are running? Amen. Nellapura tumburaadi jayitha, nittiyajeevanena, vathenave. Nellapura tumburaadi jayitha, nittiyajeevanena. Praise you God. Praise the Lord, praise the Lord. How do we need to pray? If you pray, you will get good news. 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 Amen.